We'll call to order the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session for today, which is Thursday, May the twenty eighth. We've already had our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance, so we will suspense with that on the agenda and move to announcements and presentations. And so I will read the lengthy protocol for the meeting because it's just a little bit different than what we normally have during this time of social distancing in COVID nineteen. So I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session. I'm Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Today's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. All of our elected officials and individuals with agenda items that are being presented and those wishing to comment during a public hearing or comments from citizens and delegates will be allowed to do so via Zoom software, or if you're here in person, you're welcome to do that as well. This open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and City Council has been conducted by teleconference consistent with official code of Georgia annotated section fifty dash fourteen dash one G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of coronavirus and reduce risk of COVID nineteen illness. That code section, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet by teleconference in the event of emergency so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software as shown on the city's website describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. Instructions for the public: For applicants and all participants be advised that this meeting will allow public comment as well, even if members of the public do not provide comment. Participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and listeners are not required to identify themselves, so please note that this meeting is being recorded. Some general instructions are that this is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only and no official action will be taken tonight, but official action will be taken when these items discussed tonight on Monday, June the first, two thousand and twenty. If the business any citizen wishes to speak on is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss any matters related to pending or potential city business. There are a few general protocol items I'd like to make you aware of before we start the meeting, and I ask that you would listen closely so we don't have any misunderstandings and we can all be on the same sheet of music. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We ask that you would please not make comments that are considered by the chairperson to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from that requirement, a second deviation will result in the chairman discontinuing your opportunity to speak. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not disrupt or the order of the meeting, and we will remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the public required hearings for zoning items. If you have a cellphone or other electronic devices, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off so they will not be disruptive to the meeting. And this is how the agenda will be handled. The chairperson, committee chairperson, will read the agenda item. Then the person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation, and that's the first opportunity for myself and councilmembers to ask questions. The chair will open up the floor. Then we'll move on to ask the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience or those that are online possibly. There's a maximum of twenty minutes for those who speak in favor. It says twenty. I think it was thirty before we must have changed. And thirty minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. In order for a committee person to sign in, you should have signed in. There's a form if you're here in person. If not, our Assistant City Manager says that people we should have signed in or requested before five o'clock if you would like to have had a conversation with us or ask us about any items tonight. Each person has one opportunity. When you come forward, please give us your name and address for the record, or if you're speaking in social media, give us your name and address before you speak, please. This meeting is not question and answer format or debate. It's just here for us to gather information. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please give that to the city clerk or assistant city clerk. It's Ms. Candace back there, and we'd be happy to receive that from you. So having said all of that, that's a whole lot of talking. We'll move on now to the agenda as is presented or printed. Item number four, we have done the announcements. Five is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaChamber Danley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you so much. You got the memo with the yellow and black. We're twenty. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
At this time, Madam Mayor, I have no business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, Coach. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, under Planning and Development, we have three items to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Item A is to consider a request for revised plat approval for the City of Douglasville for the purpose of subdividing into two tracts for point five-two acres at sixty-seven forty West Springs Street, Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five D, Parcel eighty-nine. The application is by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Patrice Williams is going to tell us more about that.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. The applicant, the City of Douglasville, is requesting a revised plat approval for the purpose of subdividing into two tracts, point five-two acres at sixty-seven forty West Springs Street in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, Parcel eighty-nine. The city has reviewed the request, the city staff has reviewed the request, and has determined that the proposed revised plat meets the purpose and intent of the City of Douglasville Unified Development Ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this revised plat.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there questions that the council or Madam Mayor might have concerning this? I'm hoping that Ms. Williams will enlighten us a little more through this time as to what we're splitting, what we're dividing and so forth, and if anyone else has a question of her first, I'd welcome that. Can you help us with that, Ms. Williams, as to what the purpose of this is?
Sure thing. We have a cell tower located on this parcel. You're all familiar with it. Airway is currently occupying the space, and so we want to separate the cell tower from the other land there, and so that's why we're doing the subdivision, subdividing.
Thank you. Anyone here that would like to comment or have a question concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take that up on Monday night then. We thank you. We'll go on to item B, and I believe you're there, just stay right there if you would, Ms. Williams. Hold a public hearing and consider a request to rezone city-owned property at sixty-seven forty West Springs Street of point one-four-one acres in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five D, Parcel eighty-nine from PSP, which is Public Semi-Public District, to GC, General Commercial District, with principal and accessory uses limited to school, kindergarten, elementary, and secondary private. Application by City of Douglasville. Ms. Patrice Williams, could you help us with that, please?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. On February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, mayor and council referred to the planning commission, a city initiator rezoning of point five-two acres from public semi-public to general commercial with principal and accessory uses limited to school, kindergarten, elementary, and secondary private. The item before you is a rezoning from public semi-public to general commercial with principal and accessory uses limited to school. This property will potentially be up for sale, which will allow the current occupant to, the opportunity to bid. The property has been subdivided in order to allow the city-owned cell tower to avoid the rezoning. On Tuesday, March third, two thousand and twenty, the planning commission recommended approval of this item. Staff recommends approval of this item as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments? Council, Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone that would have any public comment or question? Anyone that may be listening, or is there anyone on phone call that maybe that had called in to have questions?
The city manager says no. We don't have any.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll take that up also then. Oh, public hearing. I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, not a, not just a consideration. So is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the item? I need to make sure that we allow that opportunity, and I think they've already told me in the negative that there is no one, okay? And there are no questions of council or Madam Mayor? No one? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take this up on Monday for a vote. Thank you, Ms. Williams. One other item, item C, refer to the planning commission, a proposed ordinance to amend subsection six point oh five F two D of Appendix A, the Unified Development Ordinance to add fiber cement board siding as allowed exterior finish materials for side and rear building facades in the Quality Growth Development, QDG, Overlay District. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Staff is requesting a proposal ordinance to amend subsection six point zero five F two D of Appendix A of the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed change would add fiber cement board sightings as allowed, as an allowed exterior finish material for side and rear building facades in the Quality Growth Development Overlay District. I ask that this item be referred to the planning commission for their consideration.
Williams, I understand that this really was an oversight, so it's more of a housekeeping issue in that I think our new rewrite on the Unified Development Ordinance allowed it on the sides or allowed it on the rear and not the sides, and so we just need to clean that up, correct?
Correct. Exactly.
Questions, comments?
Chairman.
Yes, Coach Watts, go ahead.
Can you tell me what that fiber cement board siding is exactly? Is that like hardy plank or what is that?
The industry would call it hardy plank. It would be a, probably either a lap siding or a panel-type siding made out of concrete dust, basically is what it is, yes. So hardy plank is the, the name because of James Hardy Company that manufactures it, but it is a cementous fiber cement siding.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Think of it the same way, way people say Kleenex is a brand, but you think of a tissue, you think of Kleenex, you think Xerox, you think of copier. Hardy plank is exactly the same thing.
You think of Bobcat, it's a skid steer loader.
It's, yeah.
Same way. Just a name recognition. Any other question or comment? If there's no problem with that, I'd like for us to put that on the consent agenda, if that's okay, for item C. Okay? Thank you. That's all that we have tonight, Madam Mayor, under Planning and Development. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Handled very well. We'll move on then to our next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item on the agenda, but we are going to table it until our next round of meetings.
Okay, so we will be prepared to have those dates for tabling on Monday.
I believe it's the June eleventh was, and then was the Thursday, right? Is that correct?
Let's see, June eleventh and fifteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we'll make a motion on Monday to table this item for June eleventh and fifteenth meetings for two thousand and twenty. All righty. You're welcome.
And that's all we'll have this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on now then to Public Relations Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
We have no items for Public Relations Committee this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Estes. Public Safety Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Thank you. We have a couple of items this afternoon, and I'm gonna start out with, with item A, authorize the Douglasville Police Department to apply for the two thousand and twenty bulletproof vest grant from the US Department of Justice, DOJ Bureau of Justice Assistants in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars for half the cost, forty-nine bulletproof vests. Major Davidson, can you give us some report on that, sir?
Thank you, Chairman Davis. JR Davidson, Douglasville Police Department, two thousand and eighty-three Fairburn Road. And I apologize to you, but I have just found a, an error in our numbers, so I'm not sure how I asked for this to be tabled.
And we're just, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Major Davidson, June eleventh and fifteenth, does that give you enough time or you need us to give you a couple more weeks?
That will be plenty of time.
That'll be plenty of time. So Councilmember Davis, if you, on Monday, would just go ahead and make the motion to table this item to the June eleventh and fifteenth meetings of two thousand and twenty, that'll be fine.
And that will be enough time, Major?
Yes, sir, it will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item B, wholly public hearing to consider a request for alcoholic beverage license for the on-premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Licency MTI Services LLC, DBA Nancy's Pizza, located two nine eight seven Chapel Hill Road, Suite one oh three, proposed agent outlet manager, Michael Lynn Dentz. Required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. Well, Michael Dentz, would please come down, the manager of...
Hello.
Good evening.
Twenty-nine eighty-seven Chapel Hill Road, I'm the owner of Nancy's Pizza. You talked a minute ago about Bobcat Skid Steer, Pizza, Nancy's Pizza.
We've had to...
Thank you for having us in your community, though. Something I've been working on for thirty years to try and do Nancy's Pizza, so we've applied for our alcohol license. In the beginning of opening, we did not want to do alcohol license because I was only leasing the small section of where we are. Before, when I signed my lease, Five Guys was still open. Since then, Nothing Bunt Cakes tried to negotiate a place, and that fell through, and then the owner of the shopping center contacted me and made me an offer that I kind of can't refuse to go in, not knowing COVID was coming around. We opened on March the sixth, and seven days later, we have COVID. And I thought, Lord, my thirty-year dream's going down the tubes, but it's not. Douglasville's treated us very well, and we're, we're being successful even in this time. So we asked that we granted an alcohol license so we can increase with the seating capacity that we have when we can sit down. We're gonna move forward with leasing that spot, too, and we'll have three-fifths of that whole complex rented out.
At this time, Mr. Dentz, we have to hold a public hearing, but we hear from all our councilmembers, and welcome to the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any of the councilmembers, starting with Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Mr. Deese, is it like Deese?
Deese.
We're so excited to have you, my family. We've been there. I keep telling my kids, like, that's enough of Nancy's Pizza. It's thick! It's about...
We'll have a lot of other items you can try.
I know, so my husband has a whole list. I think something with lasagna, some other stuff, so...
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you so much. It's delicious, and we are excited for you to be in the community, and we appreciate that we've been able to go for our Friday Family Fun Night movies and get some Nancy's Pizza.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilman Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Deese, I too want to welcome you to the community. I have to admit that we've not eaten at your establishment yet, but I hear a lot of good things about it. I understand that you've just been overwhelmed with business.
I have.
I have an inside track to someone that works there...
Yeah.
...as a contractor occasionally, but I understand it's really been overwhelming as far as the takeout business is concerned.
Friday and Saturday nights, we've actually had to turn phones off and turn our internet off because we, we can't keep up with the production, and that was a leading factor for us to lease the next doors to try and gain more kitchen access so I can put in another pizza line because I had no idea it was gonna be this big.
Gotcha.
I knew I would do good. My wife is born and raised here in Douglasville, and I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six, and we knew this is where we wanted it to be.
Okay, well, let's, let's talk about your alcohol license just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any training, or is there anyone on your staff that has training that you could share with us as to how you will control your alcohol sales?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm a First Lieutenant with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I've been there for ten years now, so I've got extensive training in all of law enforcement. I have a few people that are on staff that already has their serving license. It is a franchise, and our corporate franchise mandates that we do some training, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's an on, online computerized, it's called tips, I believe is what it's called, that my entire staff, even the ones that aren't serving, are gonna go through that training as well, even my, my kitchen staff. Because one, one of the reasons I didn't originally want to do alcohol was because I know what can, what can happen with alcohol. So we're gonna be very studious on, on training and, and looking at signs of people that have been drinking too much. I think the industry's gonna change some from the bar scene and, and draft beers. I'm looking at, I want to have beer and pizza go together, and I'm not a drinker, but beer and pizza go together. I'm, I'm looking to really do canned beer for people that just want to sit down, have pizza and a beer, not, not socially drink. That's not what I want to do. But I also have a little bit of an inside track on a House bill that's coming out, that the, the House has already approved it, and it's waiting for the Senate when they go back into session. It's House Bill eight seventy-nine, and the governor's already stated that he would sign it, that, that allows pizza delivery, of delivery of alcohol beer when that comes about. But I knew I had to have some kind of license to begin with, and that's why I'm doing this.
Sounds good. Again, welcome. We wish you nothing but the best, and we'll be in to see you.
Thank you very much.
That's all that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Estes, you're switching.
I also would like to welcome you to the city, and I would like to thank you for your public service and now for your pizza service. I am very much looking forward to coming in. I have not been in yet, but you will see me very soon.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having, I have no questions. Having experienced the original Chicago pizza in Chicago a number of years ago, I will say that Nancy's does compare quite favorably.
Well, it's the original. Diageon's, Luminati's, they all worked under Rocco Palazzi, which is the, the Nancy's owner originally.
That's, that's good, that's awesome to know, yeah. And it, yeah, you've done a really good job. I, first, I think I had Nancy's Pizza on, the one at Ponce...
Yes.
Which they did...
Real good friends with the owner, Harry, of that one.
I was very excited when I heard that you guys were coming out and you were opening the franchise here in Douglasville, so I'm glad to see it and wish you nothing but the best.
This is my wife, Tracy. She's my general manager, and we said in nineteen ninety when we first ate it at Nancy's down the road from Lenox Mall when it was originally there in Atlanta, that we were gonna open one of these in Douglasville. And we've been steadfast until we've, we finally made it happen.
Good to have that diversity of choices here, and then you've done a good job, so thank you very much.
Any, any other councilmembers? Okay, before we hold, before we hold a public hearing?
Oh, thanks. My questions have already been answered, so thank you. I just wanted to welcome you guys to the community. My family really loves y'all, and so we're definitely glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we hold a public hearing, I'd like to, who are the day-to-day operation manager?
That is my daughter, Mackenzie Deese, or Bridie now, excuse me. She's married. And my wife is the general manager.
So they'll be putting all the training program together for the staff?
Yes, sir, they will. Yeah, our corporate will have a whole lot to do with that and tell us, because we're the only Nancy's Pizza that already does not serve alcohol. Every other Nancy's is a sit-down with a bar. They all sell alcohol, so they have training available for us.
Okay, well, no other question from the council?
I have a comment. Yes, Councilman Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to say Courtney Jonesy is my daughter. She said, "Tell you what's up," and to your lovely wife, who's a jewel.
Well, thank you.
Said, "Thanks," and she said, "Nancy's Pizza is great," so I can't wait to come and try it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Councilman Watts, did you say anything?
What I was gonna say is, it's just amazing that you opened up just before COVID hit, and you know, you hear of so many businesses struggling or going under, that y'all flourished even in that environment, and that's a testament to what y'all are doing. So keep it up and welcome to the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we have to hold a public hearing to see how good you've been to all your customers.
There, there's a few that are mad, but, you know, you can't make everyone happy.
Well, we, 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 this is for all those who speak against your, your Nancy's Pizza and your alcohol permit, so I'm gonna give them five minutes to come on down. Lock a ticket. Okay, seeing like we don't have no tickets to speak against, all those that speak for your permit and your Nancy's Pizza, you got five minutes. I believe we'd have heard enough to speak for it. We're gonna close the public hearing and thank you a lot, and come back on, on Monday, and we hopefully give you a good success story.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
And if you got some samples, we'll take some.
He's...
Thank y'all.
Thank you all.
That's all I, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I don't, I have nothing. We'll move on to item number fourteen, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think I'm gonna be able to top that.
Oh.
We have one item tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. Item A, to authorize the mayor to sign a First Amendment to the, to agreement with John Pearson, amending the parties' agreement of June nineteen, two thousand and nineteen to reduce hours of security service at city parks, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Landrum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Travis Landrum, Parks and Recreation Director, eight-eight-three-zero Gurley Road. This conversation revises an item that we discussed at the last round of meetings. You'll see that this is the amendment that we are suggesting and proposing for Pearson Security Services. We met on May twenty-first at two o'clock to discuss the content that is in the amendment that's attached. That's the first attachment that Ms. Littlefield prepared for us. With the highlights of that amendment, it has both parties operating the security services. It stays under the seventy thousand dollars recommended by the city manager. It allows us to have employees that would have been furloughed to continue operating, and it meets all of that criteria and extends throughout the second year of the agreement that is the original agreement also attached. The second attachment on there is just a refresher of the current agreement that we have with Mr. Pearson, and the third agreement is the initial proposal received by Mr. Pearson that was sent out by the city manager. One of the other highlights of the amended, amendment that we're proposing is the amount of the sixty thousand, eight forty, that gives us a buffer to allow, in the event of we get back into some normalcy with our current events, hosting tournaments, that they will be able to pick up the additional hours and still remain under budget. So I wanted to propose that amendment to Mayor and Council to move forward for consideration and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Landrum. So this, this amendment is what staff is recommending, that, that we won't have to, that, that's, we're budgeted for, and so if we vote on this on Monday night, that's basically, Mr. Pearson will have to make a decision at that time whether or not he's gonna accept it or not.
Sure.
Just, and, and if he doesn't, then, then we have another proposal of doing it in-house that you've already presented. I just wanted to... of June nineteen twenty nineteen to reduce hours of security service at city parks. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Landrum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Travis Landrum, Parks and Recreation Director, eight-eight-three-zero Gurley Road. This conversation revisits an item that we discussed at the last round of meetings. You'll see that this is the amendment that we are suggesting and proposing for Pearson Security Services. We met on May twenty-first at two o'clock to discuss the content that is in the amendment that's attached. That's the first attachment that Ms. Littlefield prepared for us. With the highlights of that amendment, it has both parties operating the security services. It stays under the seventy thousand dollars recommended by the city manager. It allows us to have employees that would have been furloughed to continue operating and it meets all of that criteria and extends throughout the second year of the agreement that is the original agreement also attached. The second attachment on there is just a refresher of the current agreement that we have with Mr. Pearson. And the third agreement is the initial proposal received by Mr. Pearson that was sent out by the city manager. One of the other highlights of the amended amendment that we're proposing is the amount of the sixty thousand eight forty that gives us a buffer to allow in the event of we get back into some normalcy with our current events, hosting tournaments, that they will be able to pick up the additional hours and still remain under budget. So, I wanted to propose that amendment to Mayor and Council to move forward for consideration and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Landrum. So, this amendment is what staff is recommending, that we won't have to, that we're budgeted for. And so, if we vote on this on Monday night, that's basically Mr. Pearson will have to make a decision at that time, whether or not he's going to accept it or not. Just, and if he doesn't, then we have another proposal of doing it in-house that you've already presented. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about that in the event that we do security in-house over the next year. There have been a few concerns about things maybe being left unsecured at the parks and I just would like to hear your take on that and anything that you've done to address that.
Yes, sir. The information that's been shared recently is a separate operation that is within our maintenance division that we are going to address with extensive training. We've also had conversations with those staff to make sure that if they are not under the impression of taking it seriously and continuing to leave things unsecured, we'll go into the process of having a progressive disciplinary conversation. So, the appearance of what has been shared is not the actual scenario, but we will address in-house those operations to make sure staff are maintaining all of the equipment, having it secured. And we have another additional layer with the division manager to make sure that at the end of the night, it will be secured before the next operating day.
Also, before I take questions from Mayor and Council, there, if we have large events where we need additional security, there's money set aside for that above this amount? Is that correct? And could you just kind of go over that real quick, Mr. Landrum?
Yes, sir. So, as noted again, the regular security services that is in the amended amount, in the amended agreement, comes to the amount of sixty thousand eight forty. That leaves remaining nine thousand one hundred and sixty to cover for any special events, tournaments that we might be able to entertain as we go into the, into twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, by the end of this year, but understanding the current circumstances, that might not be a possibility. But we do have those additional funds that they will be able to provide that service and still remain under the seventy thousand that is budgeted for that.
Thank you, Mr. Landrum. Mayor, I'm going to go to you first if you have any questions or comments.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Thank you for your hard work, Mr. Landrum. I know this has been a, it's a really layered issue with us on the council because this vendor, contractor, we've had a great relationship with for many, many years. And of course, we would not even be having this conversation, Mr. Chair, if it weren't for budgetary concerns that have come upon us with COVID nineteen. And so, we bring all of those, that, you know, these hard issues and we work in committees and I appreciate you taking the lead as the chair and working with staff, our director, to try to come up with a recommendation for us. And really, that's the best way I hope that we could handle these issues because it's not, we don't make these decisions frivolously. We really think about them and try to do the best thing for everyone. But, you know, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Landrum, because I know this has been difficult to come up with something for all of us to kind of put our arms around. We really, we know we've had to furlough some of our own employees. We're trying to bring people back to work and not have something that doesn't work for all of us. And it's highly irregular for us to receive comments and emails from vendors, but you know, in this case, that has been happening. So, I appreciate your patience and trying to dig through to get to something that works for all of us. And I hope that we will respect what staff has brought to us and like council members respect the chairs as they're, you know, we all have our opinions and we can say what we feel, you know, or not. But I just thank you all for doing the hard work as city manager, for kind of being the police in this, leading everyone. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't really have any comments. I think it's a great recommendation and I'm glad to hear, you know, that seventy thousand dollars that we have allocated in the budget, that there's sixty in that nine, almost ten thousand is for contingency if we are able to come back and have a festival and that will help us to have some overtime resources, but still make the, make that seventy thousand dollar mark. So, thank you so much. Thank you again. I apologize for taking a long time. It wasn't a preamble. I just wanted to get that out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'm going to do is I'm just going to open the floor so if anybody has any questions or comments, just speak right up.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Landrum. Mr. Landrum, I know that it hasn't been that long ago that we renegotiated this two-year agreement, less than a year ago. And at that time, we decided we wanted to stay with this company for several reasons, one of which, of course, was history. But also, I think there were some, maybe some uncertainties as to how we would handle it if we had tasked our police department to take on that responsibility. In the event that this does not work out, your plan is to include the police department or to try to retrain staff that are furloughed employees of the department now back into those positions as far as security? Is that the plan? Or do you have a plan at this moment?
Yes, sir. So, our current staff, as mentioned before, it would be a part of their normal operations to include the closure of the facilities that Mr. Pearson in the past has done for us. Similar to what we had at the end of last year, we had an in-service training done by the police department of which we would continue that relationship with the police department and have our trained staff continue to get in-service training to understand how to handle these situations that they would encounter possibly out in the parks. Where we would miss out the opportunity of having a Pearson Security Services, that's what we refer to the police department as well, to have either off-duty officers or their routine zone patrol to assist us in coverage, whether it be for events or for regular programming. So, it would be that combined effort, but most of it would rely on the staff that we have in-house and it would be a part of their regular routines to add that additional component to close the parks at the end of the night.
So, those employees that we have unfortunately had to furlough would be brought back in and that would be a part of their normal daily job?
Correct. So, just to give you an example, for an athletic staff person that is operating out at the ballpark, handling practices at the end of the night, whereas they are going to secure the parks after those teams finish their practices, whereas if they're finishing practicing at ten o'clock, our scheduled time to close is at eleven. So, they would continue on shift just to ensure that we close at the appropriate time and then continue, that would remain the closure for their night and their regular duties.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that I had, Coach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
I mean, Mr. Davis?
Mr. Landrum, during the, during the maintenance building over by Douglas County High School, how is that being secured? Do we have a system in there?
The, you mean the old pro shop that we currently have our equipment at?
Yeah.
At the back of West Pines?
Yeah, by Douglas County High School, yeah.
Well, they secure it just as if it's a regular facility. The primary building, they'll lock it at the end of the night. They do have a swinging gate that blocks at the end of that driveway and that's how they secure that facility.
When baseball come back and the employees, you know, sometimes some of the players' parents can get pretty, pretty, pretty rudy. Have you got someone that can handle the parents?
Yes, sir. Those staff are actually on-site as those programs take place anyway. We have a NACE training, National Alliance of Youth Sports, that we currently have staff on-site that have that certification. And it discusses scenarios where you have unruly parent, irate customers, anything in that arena that they should be able to handle.
Swear of the air.
I had a follow-up with that, Mr. Chairman, if this is okay. But, Mr. Landrum, currently with our security system, if we have someone that's unruly, we just call the police, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so we don't, if, with Pearson Security, they don't, they don't have arresting power or?
They do the same thing. They can handle it to a certain extent and then at that point, they'll reach out to the police if it escalates. So, we would pretty much do the same thing that they currently are doing now.
Okay, so any belligerent situation, parents or an emergency situation, we would call nine-one-one, call our PD.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's just making certain that we try to stay seamless as much as we can.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Chairman Watts, thank you. To Mr. Landrum, thank you so much for your diligence in making this work. Two questions. You mentioned earlier that the information that we received via email in regards to the security or equipment being left open, you stated that it's not, the way we received it is not really presented the way it really was. Can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. So, for example, we'll have a storage trailer in our, in our area that may not have the lock secured on it. So, upon going to the site, the doors will be closed, the lock is not in it, but what you'll receive is the door being opened and you'll see the equipment and then that's when the photo is taken. So, it's not that they'll come on-site with the doors exposed upon arrival. It's you go, you notice the door's unlocked, you open it, then you take a picture and that's what gets submitted. So, the state that you see it on the photo is not the state that it is discovered when they come to the site.
Technically, is it secured or unsecured?
It's not secured with the lock. The door is closed, but it's not secured safely with a lock. Then it is opened and then you have the picture and that's what's being sent.
But that is, that has been corrected, so it is secured, period?
Correct.
Okay. And my second question, you mentioned that we have seventeen thousand dollars. So, the sixty-one thousand would be the proposed for the security and then the nine thousand would be if there are any advances. Is that correct?
Correct. So, there is an opportunity to maximize the amount, the full amount of the budget. It just depends on the amount of events that we would have between now and the end of the second year agreement.
Okay. And then what about the uniforms for staff?
Well, staff would still have their shirts that we have that highlight the Douglasville logo and everything on it. I know Mayor Robinson did suggest or recommend having a shirt that has staff on the back of it so they can be identified.
Security or something.
Correct. So, that is a route that we could go also, just to make sure that they're identifiable.
Right. So, that there, and I do agree with Madam Mayor, so there is a different protocol as it relates to security versus staff, just a little bit of more appearance. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Councilwoman Burdanly, any other?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I keep thinking of things. I apologize.
That's all right.
The six, the money that was allocated, Dr. Burdanly is, that's what was needed for the hours. So, the director did not go up to the seventy thousand dollars, which was the max because they worked out what hours Pearson Security could work. And when they finished the hours that was needed based on what staff had, then it added up to the sixty, over sixty thousand. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know we allocated and that was a concern that I heard from some council members that, well, we had seventy thousand, why don't we just pay seventy? But based on the hours that's needed and his rate of pay, it equates to the sixty thousand plus.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I'm not going.
Any time, Madam Mayor. Yes, Ms. Hampton?
Couple of things just to, for you all to be mindful of. As a part of this agreement, if things start to expand, we would be able to come back to you all to expand Mr. Pearson's contract. But before that, I would mention to you that I do have the intention of meeting with Mr. Pearson about his communication with you all as well as staff. I think that we need to get in line with how we operate and communicate with all vendors. There's a lot of communication going in various areas and it's very hard for staff to make a firm recommendation to you as well as addressing issues and concerns that come up and providing the adequate information as far as what staff is doing. Mr. Landrum is mentioning that we're going to address things from a disciplinary area. We need to make certain that we're fully able to investigate what is happening so to give a fair opportunity for staff. And we can't do that if the information is being sent directly to you all and not giving us an opportunity to do that. So, my recommendation to Mr. Pearson will be, as we enter this agreement, to please address all information to me or to you all as a body, if he's doing that, and give us an opportunity to investigate any issue that would come up, very similar to how we would handle any other vendor at the city of Douglasville. So, I just want to let you all know that that is my intention once this contract is signed and approved.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton, for clarifying that. And Mr. Landrum, so if Mr. Pearson accepts our proposal, then our park will have Pearson Security on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays during the hours listed in the amendment. And then the Monday through Thursday, basically, we will be doing it in-house.
Yes, sir.
Right now, you know, I don't have to remind everybody, we don't have a whole lot of revenue coming into parks and rec, from parks and rec activities. We've canceled everything through September first. And so, I appreciate staff, everything that y'all have done to try to make, make this work. And I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work with Mr. Pearson on this. And if not, I'm glad that you have a Plan B ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Landrum.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments or questions before we move on? Thank you. Okay, Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight on the Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Mr. Landrum and Councilman Watts. We appreciate, again, your hard work. We'll move on to item fifteen, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no items under Transportation tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Other business, is there any other business to come before council members tonight from the elected body? The only thing I would say, I don't see anyone, is that we still have the COVID nineteen testing site at Hunter Park. I believe their hours are from nine to noon every day and not Sundays. So, that's from Monday through Saturday. And then Mr. Landrum will come back during our staff reports and talk to us about reopening parks and how that affects Hunter Park. But that, just for citizens, that testing is still available for coronavirus COVID nineteen testing at Hunter Park. And you would have to go on the Douglas Public Health website and register and have a test done. So, I know all about it because I've had tests on negative, so it's good. But that's an uncomfortable test. Okay, we'll move on. Any other business from council members? Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to put, on our next agenda, I've had a request from somebody in my district to discuss the city expanding its allowance for backyard chickens, chicken raising. So, I think we can bring that up for discussion at the next meeting. I don't want to throw it out here without anybody having any preparation for it. So, let staff look into what's been allowed up to this point and what other cities are doing and so forth. So, I just want to throw that onto the agenda for the next time.
Yes, sir. So, hens and roosters. Who makes the noise?
Yeah, hens, no roosters. Roosters are the ones, it's usually the men who cause the problems anyway, so.
They'll be making all that noise waking us up in the city.
So, it would just be for hens, a limited number.
So, staff, city manager, you have that under advisement to bring to us. Okay. Any other business from city council members? Thank you. I want to also say congratulations to the twenty twenty graduates from Douglasville, Douglas County, so Douglas County High School. Let me try to give in order. Douglas County High School, Tigers, Lithia Spring, Lions, Chapel Hill, no, no, Alexander, Alexander Cougars, Chapel Hill Panthers, New Manchester, it's some kind of cat, Jaguar. Okay, there you go. Then Airway and all of the Harvester, so homeschoolers. Congratulations to everyone for twenty twenty for graduating. I know it's been, it was a different year.
University of West Georgia?
University. Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have one, graduate from University of West Georgia.
Oh, congratulations.
Finally. Lord have mercy.
He said finally.
No, I mean, not that she took too long. She took about as long as I did. But just, you know, she's, hopefully will get a job next. We're working on that.
Congratulations. Race is a given to the swift, a strong one endorsed to the end. So, I keep telling myself that with my son because he's still there. But Anna graduated too, from Douglas County High, my daughter, and she's dual enrollment, honors AP, going to Savannah State. So, it's exciting. Okay, we'll move on. Updates from city staff. Our city attorney is Colonel Dotson here. He's in the back. How you doing? Good to see you. You're like Ironside, you know, we always have to, you'll solve the case at the end. So, we appreciate you, Attorney Dotson. Our chief assistant city attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield. She's Girl Friday. I know, I know, it's too much. Our chief, our police department of Major Davison.
No business. No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton?
Yes, ma'am. Speaking of the police department, Major Davison said that due to the deadline, he's reevaluated. He believes that he will have his numbers correct on Monday.
Okay.
So, he will be prepared to have full discussion with you all for your item under public safety dealing with the DOJ grant. So, if you all are acceptable for that, we will move forward on Monday.
All right. So, Councilman Davis, we will not table that item, that item A. Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
The other is just to be mindful that the city of Douglasville is holding Um the other is just to be mindful that the city of Douglasville is holding a permit for the Taste of Douglasville that um has been scheduled for July. I'm holding that until we get more information from the Governor's Office. I know he did make a press conference today. And I believe that he is uh to make another one either next week or the week after that addresses in full festivals. So until um I get more feedback on that, I won't be signing off on that permit. So it's not that I'm saying no, I just want to wait until we get more information from the Governor's Office on his executive orders. But I do believe that the Cultural Arts Center plans on wanting to move forward. Um but in order for them to do so on city property, uh that permit would have to be signed um by myself. Um so if you get any questions, I'm just waiting. The other um, just to mention to you all, um we are preparing to have a series of uh information regarding uh openings. And our intention is unless things to change for the worse, uh we will be as open as possible starting July one. Uh so we will start with Parks and Recreation. Tonight, Conference Center will address you all on um Monday. We do have a document online that addressed for the citizens uh how we plan on opening and what we're doing amidst uh COVID, what the requirements are. We are encouraging anyone who comes into this meeting, now that we're uh in person, uh that we have masks available, we are doing temperature checks. Uh we have not uh required it, you all have not asked us of that. Um that is, we do have a sample ordinance from the uh Georgia Municipal Association, if you're looking for that. We have very minimal uh individuals who come into City Hall. So uh and everywhere they come into, there's really not any close contact with city staff. And city staff is still prohibited from having any in-person meetings. So every meeting that we're currently having, and definitely are meetings that are virtual, and that's inclusive of internally within ourselves. Even our staff meetings are virtual, so no in-person meetings. So we're minimizing contact as best as possible until uh we see that there is a safe way to do so. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, um City Manager. I'll open the floor up for council members, but I'll ask a couple to follow up with the festivals. Of course, I I've received several phone calls from CAC um impending their, wanting to know what's the status of their permits, so. Um I'll just let them know, I'll return uh the director's call again tomorrow and just let her know that we're still waiting to see what the Governor says about festivals.
Yeah, some, some, most cities right now are doing what we're doing, they're waiting. I mean, you will hear that um some cities are opening uh some of their, for instance, the city of Acworth is opening up their beaches this weekend. Um they're opening up um, of course, sports, recreation. Uh but there's been just a lot of hold on festivals because it's very hard to um social distance when you're at a festival. Um so we will see what happens, but there, we are anticipating that the Governor will make a decision on that. Uh the other, and I should have included this in my report earlier, just for you all to know. Uh as part of the CARES Act, the state of Georgia received a um significant amount of money that potentially they will be sharing with local governments. So as part of the CARES Act, if you are a local government over a half a million in population, you were directly entitled to receive money for COVID expenses as part of the stimulus package that was passed. Local government smaller than that half a million did not receive any funding. GMA and ACCG have been successful with negotiating with Governor Kemp's office and possibly sharing some of those funds with uh local governments. We were asked last week to submit information so that there could be a direct deposit of those funds into our accounts. Those funds would be based on a formula that would include our population uh based on the two thousand ten census, so not our current numbers. Um I am hearing that um the ask uh would possibly grant it slightly less than what was asked. So of course you go in high and the Governor will probably not give you all what you've asked. So we're uh hopeful of those funds, uh the request was uh possibly in three installments. Um so I don't know what that money looks like, but I'm fairly certain we will not be able to use those monies for lost revenues. So they will probably be uh have to be used for things like um potential hazardous pay, um equipment supplies, but lost revenues where most local governments are struggling, I do not think those funds would apply to that. So that's the news I have so far, as I get more information, because it changes every day on every different Zoom Teams call, I will let you all know.
And that application is due tomorrow.
Yes, and we've already turned ours in. Um and the latest email that I received, I think eighty percent of Georgia cities have turned in uh their account information. So um the Governor, we're hoping that the Governor makes a decision within the next seventy-two hours.
Okay. And City Manager, jumping back to festivals, you said uh we were going to go to our next phase, July first, and open up. And I've gotten several uh calls about the Fourth of July parade. So we will not have a Fourth of July parade.
What was discussed at you all's last meeting was to not do the parade and postpone the fireworks until Labor Day. So unless you all change that, that's our plan.
And with that, with our Police Department, um fireworks, the whole ordinance on fireworks. So from my understanding, I I asked uh Ms. Maria to pull the ordinance for me. And I think the state supersedes for cities and you can have fireworks until eleven PM. I don't know if some of you have been hearing them from Memorial Day. And then on that day, is it all day until one AM? Major Davison, do you?
Mayor, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but the state ordinance does uh have authority over the fireworks for that day.
Yes, sir. And I think that's what the state says, that for the holiday is all day until one o'clock in the morning. Um but leading up to summertime is something like eleven o'clock at night, um so. But I've gotten a few phone calls about fireworks. Um so we will not have the Fourth of July parade, but we we're hoping that we can have Labor Day. And um and that's it. So I'll open up to council members, I've been monopolizing a conversation. Any you have, any of you all have any questions for City Manager, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, there was also, I'm getting a lot of questions about recycling too.
Mm-hmm.
Um just to clarify, and I've heard from uh Greg Roberts, recycling is still not going to be picked up for an indefinite period of time as far as I know. Some people for some reason were under the misunderstanding that we were going to start it back up again, but as far as I know, unless the City Manager has other information.
Um not only with uh the handling of recycling, inclusive of um just the handling during COVID. We also want to present to you at the same time what we think would be a recommended new price structure as well. So we're working through that with Jacobs Engineering. If you all remember some time ago, you uh signed a contract with them to look at all of our rates. Um recycling is one of those areas that we really have to look at. So um we should be able to come to you all within the next sixty days with the recommendation.
I want to make sure people understand out there, anybody who's listening, that we are not picking up recycling, starting at any given date coming up, as far as I, anybody here knows.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments from council members for the City Manager on her report? Okay, not hearing any then. We'll go to um item nineteen, which is staff reports. And the first uh report is Councilman uh Watts, will you please handle that for me, personnel organization?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Um one item, presentation of broker services by NFP Insurance Brokerage and Consulting. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Tia Austin-Bing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin-Bing, six six nine five Church Street, Human Resources Director. Um tonight, we have a presentation for you uh from from NFP, our current broker. They will provide information to you uh based on the last meeting. We we um uh provided you with um information that they will be here tonight and that they have brought that presentation here for you to have you ask them any questions that you may want to ask about services. And then to give you an update on um their current um NFP merging from Shaw Hankins, um as well as the services that they can provide uh for us under that new um merger. We also have Tammy Starkey and Bart Shaw here to present to you, as well as Mr. Randy Shaw is in the back, you all may see him. So at this time, if I could ask Tammy and Bart to come to the podium and they will take over and present to you.
Madam Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. It's good to see you um in person. So I know uh the virtual world is is live and happening, but it's always good to to see individuals. As Tia mentioned, I do have with me Tammy Starkey, she's our Vice President of NFP and the Georgia Operations. And we submitted a presentation last week and working with Communicationist team. But learned yesterday um that we needed to try to condense our presentation to about fifteen minutes. And so being that that's about thirty-plus slides, uh what I have before me is just a handful of bullet points that I would like to address. It's not anything off-topic, it's just uh more or less an executive summary. So um with that being said, I'll I'll start with probably the elephant in the room, which has to do with pricing. Um and last year in April, we were acquired by NFP, Shaw Hankins was. Um the nice part about that, or the beautiful piece to that, is we are still Shaw Hankins, we just operate under a new name. Um so the level of service, our care and our appreciation with with our clients is is still there. We just now have a tremendous amount of resource, um partnerships on a national level, um the economies of scale. And quite frankly, quite frankly, that's what's enabled us to reevaluate our pricing model for the scope of services that we provide and intend to provide uh for the future for the city of Douglasville. That coupled with understanding public entities primarily in the state of Georgia, um as well as COVID nineteen and and the potential impact that that's going to have from a financial standpoint, we have gone to the bare minimum um and trying to do so as quickly as possible. So what we've proposed is to move our commission rate from the medical um insurance from a five percent commission rate to a three and a half percent beginning July first of this year. So that's one one month away, beginning uh June, starting next next week, so we're one month out from that. Beginning twenty twenty-one, we would actually move away from a uh percentage point to a P E P M, that's a per employee per month. And the reason that we like that model, um or we're more attracted to that model is it eliminates any growth in revenue just based on the simple principle that there may be a rate increase or a rate hike on your medical insurance. So what we did is we factored out the three and a half percent based on your current enrollment. And we equated that to the thirty-five dollars per employee per month. And that would more or less lock that revenue stream in, and that's what we would operate off of and continue to provide the services for you. That's the fastest and most efficient way that we know to address the pricing and add relief uh as we know that you're looking at budget items um as close as you possibly can. So pricing being one, the other piece that I want to talk about, uh or one of the others is service. And and I guess the best way that I can describe our service model for the city of Douglasville is a twenty-four seven on-call. That's morning, noon, night, weekends, holidays, vacations. Uh we've taken a look back over the past year in our service center that's located in Marietta, Georgia. This is not an outsourced piece, this is something that has been a part of Shaw Hankins all along, has taken over three hundred calls from your employees and their family members needing help. That's not including the direct points of contact to myself, to Tammy, to Gary Williams, your account manager, and to that gentleman sitting back there. All right, that's over five hundred calls, two a day. Doesn't sound like that many, but when you factor that in and you look at the emails, we're touching the city of Douglasville and the employees nearly a thousand times a year. Over and above the scope of service, you know, providing consulting and 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 those other pieces. So just please consider that, you know, um when you look at the service that we provide, I know that it is appreciated. But we strive to do that and we appreciate and we enjoy providing that service. From a consulting standpoint, it's hard to believe that we started this journey in two thousand and thirteen. So we're midway through our eighth year of working together. And I would bet, in your position, or maybe you're a business owner or have friends that are business owners. But if I came to you seven years ago and asked you, would you sign this piece of paper? Or would you be in agreement if I said, we could look at the national average and let's just assume a seven percent rate increase for the next seven years? All hands would be up. I know mine would, it would make my job much easier. All right, for budgeting purposes, uh we can work around seven percent. What I'm here to share with you is throughout that seven and a half years, if we had done that back in two thousand and thirteen, today, the city of Douglasville would be paying one point one million dollars more than where we are today. We've averaged a four point three percent rate increase. Over and above that, we've been able to go back to the carriers and negotiate, provide competitive data, um leverage our stance and our block of business to negotiate an additional one million dollars of savings to the city of Douglasville. All right. And how do we do that? Just some of the, some of the ways, we carved out your retirees. We pulled that liability off of the city of Douglasville and set them up with an even more enhanced plan through Medicare and a supplement. Um and we also arranged it so that the Medicare is paying primary, not the city of Douglasville's plan. We've also worked closely with HR and the entire Wellness Committee to implement a true comprehensive wellness program that, if you remember, has won you, not one, but two Atlanta or Georgia's most healthiest employers by the Atlanta Business Chronicle. All right. In our most recent, we're we're coming down the home stretch in the final phases, set back only a little bit by COVID nineteen again, but is is the onsite clinic. Um I think our our last implementation call is set for for next week. Um and so those are huge milestones that we're extremely proud of, but it's not something that we did alone. It's through the partnership with with the city of Douglasville. Talk just a second about our expertise with public entities in the state of Georgia. For twenty-five years and then some, we have been working with not only municipalities, but county governments, school districts, um utility boards, water and sewer authorities, and most of those contiguous to Douglasville and Douglas County. We understand the challenges that you face. We pride ourselves in excellent communication to explain the benefits, the um, excuse me, to attract and engage the employees through our educational meetings, um answering questions and providing those services. And then we also are a preferred partner and and value our partnership with associations like the ACCG and GMA and the GLGPA. The last point I'd like to talk about are are some of the enhanced services that we now have access to, um that I kind of touched on in the beginning with NFP. Um one of the most recent is is a new development, a partnership with ADP. And this isn't something that just happened overnight, this is something that started many months ago and was inked about a month ago, early April. And we're ready to roll this new product out to our clients next week. And what that does is it enables us to work directly with our clients that ha- already have arrangements with ADP so that we can help with employee eligibility maintenance. We can provide the services that we once did through our own uh benefit admin system, B-Swift. It really provides us with, for lack of better terms, the master key to ADP so that we can serve you and serve the employees at the city of Douglasville. Obviously, we have access to enhanced uh pharmacy management utilization um programs, as well as a COVID nineteen modeling tool. I mean, that's a big question mark out there, is what is the true impact of this COVID nineteen? Not just tomorrow, but what about next year or in five years? How do we adhere to that and how do we try to budget and plan for for just that impact? On top of our experience and claims and trying to have a more preventative model with an onsite clinic and wellness initiatives and and those kind of things, so. I'll close with this and naturally we'll um be here for questions and 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 try to address any of those that you may have. But I know oftentimes, we see something or we hear something that makes it appear that the grass may be greener on the other side. And we know that that's not always the case. So I hope the points that I've highlighted this evening represent the job well done that we have done and that we will continue to do. Uh we certainly appreciate your business and we look forward to, excuse me, we look forward to serving you for many years to come. With that, I'll open it up our, for questions.
Madam Mayor, I'll start with you.
I don't have any, thank you, Coach. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Shaw?
Oh, I'd just like to make a comment if I could.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw. Folks, I appreciate you all coming and making this presentation. Uh I think that it's only fair that we hear from you and I'm I'm so thankful that you've been able to be here to actually do that in person as the the others were able to.
Mm-hmm.
I'm um I'm impressed with with the information that you've provided us with. I guess my question is, as a part of the combination uh with the new parent company, um how, and it may not be a fair question, you may not want to answer it, but if you can, I'd appreciate it. Uh how is your retention as far as those other communities with which you have advertised here that you still are working with? How is that working out now under the new uh the new mandate?
You can, I I, it's perceived very well, um numbers-wise, Tammy would be the one that that could report better on that or answer that question better. Tammy would be the one that that could report better on that or answer that question better.
Yeah, we've since acquisition that occurred April of last year, we've had 100% retention of our public entity clients. And then we've continued to grow our business because of now we have our Shaw Hankins expertise within the public entity market, the experience there, but now the enhanced national resources that we're able to provide around actuarial services, the prescription drug coalition and pricing. So it's just kind of brought the best of both worlds to our clients and then new prospects.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you all being here.
Thank you, Coach. Questions or comments? No? We appreciate y'all's presentation today, and I I'm not sure, Ms. Bing, at what point will decision have to be made or?
It's for discussion.
Thank you, NFP. Mr. Chairman, I think at at this point, you've received all the information that we were to provide to you at your request. I think we would just staff would refer to you all for direction. If there's anything else that you would need from us, or if you are ready at some point to for us to place an item on the agenda to move forward with 2021 services. So we would be at your mercy at this point. And if the city manager has anything to add to that.
Okay, no, open season is in October.
Open enrollment is.
Open enrollment up.
It's historic.
Open season. Woo, child! There's too much. Open enrollment.
It's historically October for us, so we will get started with that around the first of October, first two weeks of October.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to have it before then. So, Mr. Chairman, I would just advise for you to talk with city manager and the chair, director, and then you can bring it.
Yes, ma'am.
To the agenda for us to make a decision.
If anybody has a.
Preference.
A preference, send me an email or text or contact Ms. Bing or or Ms. Hampton, and we'll take it from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all. Madam Mayor, that's the only item I had under personnel and organization.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to B, which is the Committee for Planning and Development Committee that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a discussion regarding stormwater drainage issues for the Williams property located at 7069 Rose Lake Circle. Mr. Marcus Thompson is going to help us with that. How are you, sir?
Good, how about yourself?
Good.
It's good to see you all.
Good to see you too, Mr. Thompson.
So Mrs. Korea Williams reached out to staff concerning an excessive amount of stormwater, exiting the storm pipe on her property located at 7069 Rose Lake Circle. Per WSA, a creek begins north of Mrs. Williams' property and the adjacent subdivision that enters the storm pipe system that runs under Rose Lake Circle and leads the pipe system located on the side yard of her estate. Note that all drainage structures, pipes, channels and streams within the community are owned by the Rosewood Subdivision Homeowner Association. Being that, the community is private property, therefore, the authority will have no ownership of maintenance responsibilities for the storm system. The item is present, I mean, presented solely to introduce you guys to the circumstance before it gets out of control and the property owner. Staff will follow up with more details and any requested information within two weeks at the next round of council meetings. However, Mrs. Williams is not present. There was an emergency, but we do have Mike Mettler, Mr. Mettler here, if you guys to provide any information that I have not covered this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Mettler, can you come forward for us? I'm going to open the floor, but I want, I had a general question before I do that, just in case either of you might answer it. This being private property and it being controlled by the homeowners association, if I'm not mistaken, are the homeowners not responsible for the upkeep of the streets, all of those various items? And was the city has no jurisdiction there as far as improvements, as far as roads or or anything? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Come on up, Mr. Mettler. There may be someone that have a question. One request that I would have, Mr. Thompson, when we talk about this again, I would like to see where within the development this property lies as far as the overall overview, development, subdivision, plat or something, to see topographically and geographically where the where this property is, to see where it lies within the development. Because, I mean, we have natural drainage structures, we have creeks, we have ponds, we have a lake there within the development. So I'd like to see that. Mr. Mettler, did you have something for us?
Sir, I have a copy of the plat.
Okay, that's fine. I'll open the floor for questions for anyone that may have one. Madam Mayor, you go first.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mettler and Mr. Thompson for coming in and looking at these pictures. It it really just having the addendum to what Mr. Chairman has said, that it's private property. But not only that, when those subdivisions are done, aren't there detention ponds or retention ponds that are deemed to the subdivision? And then with their their association fees and all of that is part of their maintenance?
That is correct. And that the ownership of the detention facilities were covered in their covenants.
Yes, sir. Now, do we do anything for standing water? I know I'd spoken with city manager about starting them a skiel spraying again, and looking at these pictures, is is some standing water?
Well, the, if you're looking at Mr. Thompson's photographs.
Yes, sir.
That is a flow. It's a creek. It's generated up from Pine Crest.
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
Back up to the park. And it travels southerly and goes actually underground with the the use of culverts on the north side of the street, and then transits underneath Rose Circle and then exits on Lot 101, which is next door to Ms. Williams.
That was comprehensive, Mr. Mettler.
He was prepared.
Sorry?
Yeah, I said that was comprehensive.
Both of them.
And I'm I'm following you as you're talking like I'm riding a little boat. Okay, so.
Could I see the plat, Mr. Mettler?
Thank you.
Other questions? Who else had a comment? Question? Mayor Protim, you look bewildered.
I'm just looking at the map here. If I'm not mistaken, it looks like it appears to drain from that house on the inside of Rose Lake Circle into the lake that's already there. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? That's right. Nobody ever does. If I'm not mistaken, that property looks like it backs up to the lake in Rose Lake Circle. Is that correct?
It is in the general path. There are several other properties that lie below that, that, but there is a swale.
Does that swale follow the property line between the properties?
Pretty much.
Okay, so it eventually does end up in the lake.
Well, no, water finds its own course and doesn't necessarily stay within easements. I did a topographic review of the subdivision to the G I F system, and there was a constant fall from street level all the way to the lake. And the lines of topography pretty much followed the the path of where this creek, you know, eventually wound up in Rose Lake.
Is it too much to ask if this was just an issue of the original engineering of the landscape?
Went back and looked at hydrology for this. It was designed according to the standards that. Get the the technical material. It was designed to the Georgia Storm Water Management Manual, Volume Two. So they they took in consideration pre-construction, post-construction, and whatever else was being developed within the community and what impacted all the impervious surface would have in their designs. And they designed it based on a 100-year, 24-hour flow, which is, but you have a creek too, so.
I didn't. Is this in it? Is this standing water all the time, or is this just during heavy rains? It's moving. Oh, it's not even standing. It's moving. Okay.
Yeah, it's present all the time. I think, too, that the level of water is has been increased because the first quarter of this year, we had a record-breaking amount of rain. And it set a record, state record, for the volume of rain itself. So we're we're still dealing with a little bit of saturation just almost two months after that.
Has the WSA been involved in this issue at all yet?
They wrote a letter to the property owner last July stating, you know, the original complaint was that there was wastewater that was discharging out of that. So they did water sampling, they did dye testing to ensure that there was not a break in their sanitary sewer system. And they also did dye testing to check to make sure that all the connections in the vicinity were, in fact, connected to the sanitary sewer system. Their water samples came back showing that there was no discharge of wastewater into this culvert.
Thank you, Mr. Mettler.
Chair? Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. Who has, who else had a question or comment? Yes, go ahead, Coach Watts.
So, Mr. Mettler, Mr. Thompson, so this is basically a creek coming out of that culvert. You said it's running water. I mean, it's like that all the time. And was it like that when they moved in? Or does this just materialize because of all the rain, springs, underground springs?
It has been present. She has, the water table is very high on her property, and there's water seepage from the ground on her property.
Yes, sir.
That is probably part of the creek that was actually channeled underneath the street. But again, water will will flow wherever there's a hard surface, and there's no way for it to to go deeper. So the water table on both Lot 100 and 101 is pretty high.
So don't have context here, don't see where it's going. So it's going through her property to the the next, the neighbor's property or?
There's a, there is a, what they call a channel legally, I mean, it's a ditch that has materialized over time. It started off probably as a swale and to help channel the water, but, you know, the constant flow, water has a tendency to erode. So you have now this elaborate channel that actually gets all the way down to the the lake.
I just, I just would like to comment that, you know, since I've been on the council, you know, we've had several folks come to us about private property issues. WSA has seen most of them and and have not done, you know, taken it up because they're not required to. And, you know, it's it's a it's a tough situation, but I don't, I don't know. We've we've got, we've, you know, we take care of this one. We're going to be taking care of the next one and the next one. So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Coach. Any other comment? Yes, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I will say, just to agree with Mr. Mettler and Mr. Thompson, as far as giving the council general information about water, I had my A R C meeting yesterday and Catherine Zitch, who is with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planting District, and WSA meeting on Tuesday, that we've had the wettest season in four years or five years. So it's about 50%. It's raining 50% of the days, and typically, it's 30%. Last year was 30%. So we're up by 50%. So we're getting a lot of rain, and it's just really saturated with water. So that might be one, another reason why there's a lot of water there, because it's just a lot of rain now.
Thank you.
As the summer wears on, obviously, we have a lot drier weather, and the the volume of water also diminishes considerably, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, any other question or comment? I have, go ahead, Ms. Hampton, let me ask one other question, then I'll, then I'll yield to you. Mr. Mettler, Mr. Thompson, would this then have been the inlet that would supply the lake with its water source prior to possibly the subdivision being developed?
I would suspect that is.
Okay, so naturally, it's going to flow into that lake, and it appears from the development process that it has been channeled underground through culverts, and this is the outlet. And without this supply, you would have no lake there, correct?
That would be one source.
Or at least you'd be, you'd have one less source.
Has the ability to supplement the the lake.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Hampton, I think, had a comment or a question?
Only comment I had, Mr. Chairman, was, of course, staff was not looking for direction tonight, but just so you all could receive the information, you'll have another item very similar. So if you need any additional information from these two gentlemen or myself, please let us know, because we'll be preparing to do follow-up with you in two weeks to see if you want to move forward, and we can get that information for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Hampton. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your help. Madam Mayor, that's all that we had under that discussion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I am getting some signs, it seems like, from council members that we need to take a break for five minutes, or you want to keep moving? No? No? Okay. All right, I just thought I'd, we need to have a sign. I did, I got a couple, so I was just wondering. But from the last meeting that we had, when it goes beyond two hours, you all were asking me to take a break, but we'll keep going. If we need to insert a break, just let me know. So we're going with staff reports. The next two are from Councilmember Chris Watts, who's the Chair of Recreation, Culture and Tourism. And so if you don't mind taking C and D for me, I really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm C is the staff report on reopening recreation facilities and programming, and I believe Mr. Bass is going to be speaking with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your attachments, you will find our reopening plan outline and the summer camp COVID-19 safety plan, which we'll talk about more in detail over the attachment. So going along with the presentation, we've collected information from the CDC, the National Recreation and Parks Association, and Georgia Recreation and Parks Association in order to build our reopening plan in three phases, similar to the other municipalities as they plan to reopen. We are looking at a June 1st reopen date for Phase One, which we'll go over, and Phase Two and Three later on, all depending on current circumstances, contingent on where we are with the pandemic. All right, so this overview is for our recreation programming operations, our athletic operations, and our recreation facility operations. We did make mention of our parks, recreation facilities, our our parks, as we do plan to do some programming there, similarly different to how we've provided recreational services in the past, just utilizing open space. So those timeframes are mentioned as well in Phase One. So starting with the first two facilities, Alice Hawthorne Community Center and the Ike Owens Community Center, we are looking at doing some modified hours than what we normally would operate. The Alice Hawthorne Center, looking at 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM specifically for our summer camp, and our Ike Owens Community Center from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. As mentioned earlier, Hunter Park is a testing site for COVID-19. So far as park operations, we're looking at 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM operations, and Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, because there is no testing on that day. All right, and the other parks will follow the same schedule as we have in the past from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I do just want to make mention in Phase One, what we're looking at from a facility standpoint, at the Ike Owens Facility is rolling back some of our programs, like the Weight Watchers, A A R P tax, tax season has been extended. So possibly, they're ready to come back on, bringing those services on and some small programming within the facility, but just the programming where we have some vendors that utilize the facility. A A R P has not said that they're ready to start back taxes. We do know that has been extended, nor has Weight Watchers, but we do want to provide that opportunity for them to be able to come back, of course, practicing social distancing. And that's just in Phase One as far as it pertains to the facilities. Going on to the next page with our summer camp, we have counseled our traditional summer camp. We usually average about 100 participants, and there was no way that we could control that, but we are looking at doing a smaller modified version of our summer camp for children of our city employees. We're looking at a smaller camp, about 30 participants. We have two major rooms at the Alice Hawthorne Center and the gymnasium, so we're able to separate and social distance, 10 in both rooms and then 10 in the gymnasium. We have relied on the American Camp Association guidelines to determine how we go about providing safety for our kids. That is the last attachment where it details our safety plan. And the governor has also issued 32 standards as pertains to camp operations, so we will follow those guidelines as well. But in Phase One, we are looking at shifting our programs virtually as we have done since the pandemic started. as we have done since the pandemic started and also allowing some outdoor programming opportunities, programs that we have traditionally done inside, like yoga. We are looking to move that outside and utilizing some of our open space, like our football field in order to social distance. And again, all these, these class sizes will be determined based on CDC guidelines. In Phase Two, we are looking at bringing back some operations indoors. Again, this is, there is no set date. This is all based on where we are with the pandemic. But when, when you all feel that we were ready, and city leadership feels that we're ready to move forward with Phase Two, we'll start bringing back in some indoor operations like our pickleball within the Alice Hawthorne Center. This could potentially be, this is September, we're not sure, but we're looking at adding some of those recreation programs inside the facility, tennis table at Alice Hawthorne Center, some operations that they're going to be utilizing inside. And this is where we'll also see from athletic standpoint, we had to cancel our baseball and all of our other youth and athletic, adult sports. So we're looking at offering some small modified camps if we are operating during the summertime still for our youth, youth leagues and for basketball and baseball and lacrosse with smaller numbers, small sized numbers, six and less. And then we're looking at possibly starting a bike program at Hunter Park. Like I say, trying to really hone in on the outdoor program opportunities. It's something we haven't done in the past, but we have been challenged to really be creative at how we go about offering services as we prepare for our new normal as it pertains to recreation. And finally, going into Phase Three, this is where we get back to our operations that we have in the past where it pertains to facility operations, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM operation where we're bringing back some of those other programs that we have canceled in the past and our normal recreation ops, operations contingent on where we are with the, with the pandemic and where we are with the testing site at Hunter Park. So I do just want to make mention that we are trying to be as creative as possible. We are trying to still provide the service, but we do recognize that it's going to be hard to maintain if we gather in large crowds. As you all have, as mentioned before, a lot of our special events have been canceled, like our big fishing derby and the July 4 celebration. We have canceled those events, but we're still trying to bring some type of operations back. We are canceling catch and release at the pond. If we are going to move forward, we're allowing fishing at the park. We won't do a catch and release. We are pond is stocked, but we will cancel that until summer of 2021, just simply trying to make sure we follow with the CDC guidelines. So, and that's all I have as far as that, I'm sorry, finally, in Phase Three, this is where you'll also see a lot of our associations that rent our facilities, like Hunter Park for baseball tournaments. This is where you'll see those individuals being able to start back utilizing the facility and our facility rentals as well, making sure again, we follow those guidelines that have been issued from the CDC and the state.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. So, Ms. Hampton, I guess I could address this to you. You know, we've canceled all outdoor activities, camps, baseball of it until September 1. So is it realistic to say that barring any, anything unforeseen with the pandemic, that maybe September 1 might be the beginning of Phase Three? Or is that what we're shooting for?
Yes, sir. I would say that we're trying to phase things in as the governor brings forth his orders. Like today, he had an extensive order on summer camp. So as he, as he adjusts his orders, we adjust what we can bring back. So, and as Mr. Bass mentioned, we're trying to come up with a plan that's going to be our new norm for the year. So we don't want to be so restrictive that we can't loosen things up and where it makes sense, but we don't want to be so loose that we can't just pull things back. So I think, you know, the plan that they've come up with, barring any dates, can marry with whatever the governor comes out with when he's ready to change his orders.
And, and hearing what you're saying, just kind of looking at one program that's not run by Douglas County, Douglasville Parks and Rec, but a group like the Tiger Cubs that, that depends on our facilities, you know, as a fall sport, are they able, or do we have any idea if they are planning for the potential of using?
So there, there have been some workouts. They've tried to bring small groups on. Charles Jones sits on our advisory board over Tiger Cubs. We've been in constant communication with him and he's, they're still trying to decide what direction they're going to go and what their start date will be. But like I say, once we get to that phase where we're comfortable enough to be able to allow that with the rest of our associations, then we'll do so.
I did hear where Governor Kemp said today, June 1, he's going to allow workouts for amateur and professional sports beginning June 1, I thought I heard. So that's a good sign. Got to get that football back in the fall, don't we? Okay, Mayor, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. A couple of comments. Thank you so much for the report, Mr. Bass, and helping us to see the phased approach with our park system, recreational system. For Hunter Park, I just wanted to clarify, I know you have on Phase One that the times are from 3:00 to 11:00 and that is a testing site at Hunter Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Testing is from 9:00 to noon so that citizens will feel comfortable if they want to come and walk, that there is a couple of hour, three hour break in that, you know, to give the opportunity for the testing site folks to clear and for citizens or whomever that may want to take advantage of the facility, that they can come in. And so there's a, there isn't, there aren't any gaps as far as testing and people coming in to have a recreational opportunity.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Coach. Mr. Bass, can you expand very shortly about the bike program that we're going to start? This will be something new, is that correct?
Yes, sir. This will be something new. So our program coordinator has tried to be, has created as possible, is starting, bringing on our outdoor recreation programs. Like I say, we're adjusting to our new normal and we, we recognize that bikes have not been in our practices in the past, but we're looking at bringing those on now with a mapped out course with us being able to control it in-house. So we're looking at having bikes at our facility where you'll be able to rent and do guided rides and we're going to map out a trail, a track, trail through, once the train tracks are up, that we'll be able to utilize that course as well for the guided bike. But that's within Hunter Park, we're able to control it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good news.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. I love the idea of that. That's great. Any other questions or comments from council?
Davis, I think.
Mr. Davis?
I was just trying to take it all in, you know, trying to think about the professional baseball, basketball, all of it. And then we on the small side, you said bike program, how are we funding all the bikes? And we have a bike mechanic.
Yes, sir. So, well, actually, what we did, we started small. We did have some funds inside from our program and operations budget in order to be able to get just a handful of bikes. We're, like I said, we're starting small just to try. We didn't want to make a big investment if this was a program that wasn't support or didn't go as what we planned. So we do have a vendor that will operate and repair bikes for us, which is local, which is one of the things we were looking to do. So we have a plan and we feel confident about it.
It has a bike shortage out there now.
There he is. We found that out in trying to purchase bikes. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, staff report regarding PGA event at West Pines Golf Club. And Mr. Cartwright's going to present that. And I've been hearing a lot of good things about what's going on over at, at West Pines.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cartwright, 9090 Rose Avenue, Douglasville, Georgia. So just to touch on the PGA event that we're like, we are looking forward to hosting with your blessing, it's the Georgia section of the PGA. So as you all know, I'm a PGA member of the PGA of America. So it's, would be a field of 120 players that are PGA pros and top amateurs around the state of Georgia. Now, 120 might sound like a big number right now, but keep in mind, this is spread out over a period of 12 hours, give or take. And an average day for us right now is 120 players. We've had it up to 160 on a regular day. And these 120 players will be adhering to the PGA new COVID guidelines that you'll hear about here in a moment. And we actually have the ability to penalize them or disqualify them from the event if they don't adhere to the rules. So we do have that at our disposal. There's 14 statewide section events, two of which are held at municipal facilities. We would be one of the two. We see this as a great opportunity to increase our reputation in the state and in the region. And these participants are really the experts and the stakeholders in the game of golf. When my members are traveling to play, they're asking me, hey, where should I go play? We want these other PGA members saying West Pines is the place to play if you're in our neck of the woods. This really builds on the TV commercial campaign that we've been doing the last few years, and this takes it that step farther with word of mouth with those experts and stakeholders. I'm going to call up Mr. Pat Day, who's here with me today to talk about those new COVID policies. And we will be the third event on the calendar for the year. So the first event would be coming up June 1 and 2. We will not be the guinea pigs. And he is here to go over the policies and answer any questions that y'all might have.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As Chris said, my name's Pat. I'm sorry.
There you go. Your name and address.
Pat Day, it's 590 West Crossville, Roswell, Georgia.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bass.
As Chris said, I'm the tournament director for the Georgia PGA. So like 14 events he's talking about, I get a run. We've sat down in, within the PGA of America, there's 41 sections. It's the world's largest working sports organization of 20,000, 29,000 members across the United States. So we've sat down and talked to some other PGA sections, what they're doing. And we've come up with a policy that, that we think is really good. Some of the things we're doing is when they, they can't get to the golf course or they can't get out of their cars more than 30 minutes prior to their tee time. So with that said, that would only really, on our, going off one tee, we'd only have approximately 12 players or 12 people up on the driving range at any one time. And spreading them out, that, you know, they'll be more than the six feet, they'll probably be closer to 12 feet apart. We're, we're not doing any type of scoreboard or anything. So there's not going to be any kind of large gathering when they're finished looking at scores. That's all going to be on their app that they'll have on their phone. So they'll, you know, go home, look at it. We also require that once they get finished playing, they have to immediately leave the facility. They can't stick around or anything like that. We're only, our policy, and I know the, the governor has, has just come back out, I think just maybe last week it was, amended that on the golf carts. You can't allow two people in a golf cart now. They recommend one. They do certainly highly recommend that if two are in a golf cart, you wear a mask. We're sticking with the policy of only going one person per golf cart. We feel like, you know, we're going to try to be proactive. We're going to be more cautious than maybe what's out there right now. In, in the game of golf, you know, when you're running golf tournaments and doing the rules of golf, your, your duty is, you're, you're responsible for protecting the entire, entire field and, and the rules. And we take that beyond just with the, the tournament itself, trying to protect everybody. Whether some of them agree with it or not, but, you know, we're going to do our best to do that. And on any touch points on the golf course, like, you know, pulling the flagstick out, we're, we're not going to let them do that. They're not going to be able to touch that. You know, any water coolers on the golf course, we're not going to have those, that sort of stuff. So we'll, you know, we're going to go back to Chris and his staff in sanitizing the golf carts and, and all the touch points on those, making sure everything's safe. So we're going to do our best. And as Chris said, we, we've put in place that we, we can ask them to leave, you know, if, if, if they're going to do, you know, do something that we're not asking or we're asking them to do, then you know what? There's the parking lot, there's your car, there's the trunk, there's the road. You don't want to abide by our rules, then, then you're not going to play because we're, we're not only protecting the players, our staff, but we're, we look at us, we're protecting Douglasville. And, and, you know, we, we want to come in and do our part. That needs to be done. But I'm, I'm willing to answer any, any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Does everybody have a copy of our, our policy? If not, I, I do have.
It's attached. Yes.
It's on our attach.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry.
Appreciate that. Mr. Cartwright, real quick, is this a revenue event or where does it?
More of a publicity and, and marketing event. Yes, sir. So it's, it's, again, it's about changing or spreading our good reputation.
And the, the folks that are participating, they come from the area, all over the state?
All over the state. I talked to a guy this morning that's planning on coming that lives on St. Simon's Island. So again, we're talking about bringing in the experts in the game. We're talking about bringing in them into our area. They'll be staying in our hotel rooms, eating our food, filling up their tanks with our gas.
There is, there'll be, there'll be some revenue involved.
Correct.
But that's great. And it's a feather in our cap and a testament to West Pines and how, how y'all have been operating it. Does anybody, Mayor Rob, Mayor, I'll go with you first, if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Chris. Good to see you and thank you. We appreciate the representative from PGA and excited for the opportunity. I just had a couple of things about our pro shop at West Pines.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we taking care of that? And is that, that, will that facility be open? You know, when we have some golf tournaments? I hate, I was the beer girl in that cart driving around. So are we going to do that or how do we?
So for a type of event like this, we wouldn't provide that service anyhow.
Okay.
These players want as little distraction as possible. So it's not about maybe socializing. It's, they're there to perform and compete and then, you know, think back on it fondly afterwards, hopefully after they come and see us. But they're not, you know, we have a rule always in place, there's no alcohol allowed to be consumed during the event anyhow. So as far as the clubhouse, I think that's to be determined. The clubhouse is still closed at the moment. Everyone is checking in at the back door. We got plexiglass up, sliding your card underneath, everything sanitized. I think we'll wait and see how city manager and, and you guys as well feel as long, as well as the governor's input on when we want to open the clubhouse back up. But I, I haven't put a date on it yet. It's not something we've, we've discussed. We can do this event without the clubhouse being open, to answer your question.
Okay. So this exercise for them is just to get their numbers up, to continue to build? It's self motivated? Is it, they won't have any, any food?
We'll, we'll sell the food and drinks that we normally do.
Okay.
Again, out the back door, but with only a 30 minute period to get ready for your round of golf, I, I'm not sitting down to eat breakfast if I only have 30 minutes to hit some putts and hit some balls before. So that kind of, that kind of helps and takes that pressure off of opening the clubhouse, frankly.
Okay. And then you will disinfect the carts, the golf carts? And you said one person in the cart at a time, even though we're allowed to have two, based on what the governor says, you all have more stringent requirements because it's going to be tough to have two people that's hot outside with a mask on.
That's what we're still doing at the golf course, unless you're a member of the same household, it's still one rider per cart.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Oh, fever. Do you check, or you're not going to do that at all? Do you know how we try to check to see if you have a temperature?
Something we could discuss and, and talk to the PGA staff about putting in place. But the nice thing about golf and competing is there's no reason to be within six feet anybody at all, anytime.
So you don't have to social distance.
Correct.
Picking up your ball out of the hole. Yes, sir. So they can't retrieve their balls? I know you said you can't get the flags out, but if you're getting the balls out of the?
So if you remember the presentation from a few weeks back where we have the device that will retrieve the ball out of the hole? They, the PGA has purchased something similar. We'll be using their device, their flagsticks, all that sort of thing. Another thing that Mr. Day and myself were discussing earlier, there will also be a waiver that all the participants have to agree to and sign that, you know, holds everyone harmless, the PGA of America, the Georgia section, as well as the host sites.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Day, Mr. Cartwright. I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, one quick question. Do these type of events usually bring spectators?
Minimal. Yeah, minimal.
But, but we will allow that if people?
There is spectator guidelines in the attached policy, just in case, you know, we get some out. I wouldn't be surprised if some of our members wanted to come out perhaps, but we're not talking about crowds. But we're not talking about crowds or gatherings of any kind.
Okay, thank you. Any other, yes, uh, Councilman Davis, we'll start with you.
Yes, uh, Chris, thank you, sir. Uh, is this a totally free event? Uh, there are costs, uh, per round, uh, will the members be able to, to play on that day, on tournament day?
The golf course will be closed to the membership on those days. Um, again, we see this as a publicity opportunity, spreading our good name. The course is donated to the PGA for this event. And the membership, uh, excuse me, the PGA members that are playing, they pay a fee to play in the event.
Oh, they pay a fee?
Correct.
Okay, so the money going toward our golf course, or going to the PGA, or where the money going?
It's go, it goes into the purse. So these are professional golfers playing for a purse, much like you'd see on TV, but with a lot less zeros.
So is it gambling?
No, they're professional athletes.
Okay, uh, so what day will you give out the trophies?
Uh, it would be the, the Tuesday, as long as there's no weather that delays the completion of the event. But it would be that Tuesday afternoon, yes, sir.
Oh, interesting. Saw that.
Thank you, Councilman Davis, uh, Councilman Esses.
Um, first of all, I, I would like to thank you for taking a very conservative approach to, to the health and safety of everyone involved. But, um, so this is a series of fourteen tournaments around the state?
So there's fourteen, what we would call section-wide events, um, and they culminate in a Player of the Year points race. Not everybody plays in all fourteen, we have guys that certainly do. Uh, but, but fourteen, what we would call section statewide events.
And, and the first tournament of the series is June first and second, you said?
Yes, sir, the upcoming Monday, Tuesday, it's the Milton Martin Honda Classic. And it will be at Chattahoochee Golf Club, which is the city of Gainesville's golf course.
And what would, what are the proposed dates for, for this particular event?
July sixth and seventh.
Okay. Um, is, is this series of tournaments a regular occurrence, or is this just a one-time thing this year, or?
Uh, most of them are annual events. Uh, we hope to have a successful event.
That, that's where I was, that's where I was heading, is this?
We hope to maintain our place on the schedule moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, yes, Councilman Adams.
Mr. Cartwright, it sounds like you all have put together what I would think would be a premier event for our facility in the wake of what we've had going on with the weather and the COVID-nineteen situation. Um, you all are to be commended for that. July sixth and seventh, so the course will be closed to the public, to our members.
That's correct.
And we are one, correct me if I'm wrong, we're only one of two public courses within the state that have been chosen to be a part of this fourteen event series?
Municipal courses.
Municipal courses, city-owned.
There's two other public facilities, so of those fourteen, four are open to the public.
Okay, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had, Coach.
Anybody else? Councilman Miller?
Mr. Chair, I think actually most of my questions were taken by the other council members, um, that you're about, you said there will be a lot, you will allow spectators, you're gonna limit the number of spectators on the course?
Uh, to be honest, there won't be enough spectators that we need limiting.
You won't have to police it, no?
No.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I mean, if.
We're talking dozens.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we had twenty spectators, that's pretty good.
Jumping up and down.
Some of the players' wives might be walking along watching, that's about it.
Okay. Um, is, I don't know if you can answer this, are we gonna televise this in some way locally, or is there gonna be any coverage? Let me, you know, when I, let me.
Yeah, we might, we might be able to do some things social media-wise, or maybe with the city TV crew, maybe some highlights perhaps.
I was wondering if you were gonna arrange with Communications Department to try to?
Certainly work on that once we get the green light.
Get some publicity out of this.
Yes.
And regarding the financial structure, okay, the city's contribution is basically the course itself. You know, we're not paying anything beyond, uh, permitting PGA to use the course. Is there, is there a fee that we're paying to the PGA?
There, there is a, there is a sponsorship fee, uh, coming out of the CVB budget, the tourism budget. Uh, so typically, a title sponsor for an event like this would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, as I mentioned, we're starting the year with the Milton Martin Honda Classic. If I told you that, where, what golf course would that be on? So one of the things that I wanted to do is keep West Pines in the name of the golf tournament, so that we're benefiting from that publicity. So we're not paying twenty-five thousand dollars, we're paying about ten thousand dollars, and then we're getting the rest of the value in the donation of the golf course, so that the purse is still what they're used to having.
And the purse money is coming out of the fees that the players pay, we're not responsible for that?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess the other question was handled by Councilman Esses about, you're gonna try to make this an annual event?
We would like to, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Davis?
So, uh, who paying for all the advertising and promotion? We start out with twenty-five grand, all the, uh, advertising magazines, uh, the, uh, production.
That would be the PGA's responsibility, that's what that money's for. And I, and I can tell you that the first two events of the year have already been sold out. They're already have a waitlist for participation. So being the third event of the year, we hope to check that same box. So they certainly, uh, there's a desire to, for our local professionals to play again with everything that's been going on. And I hope that we are the third sold-out event of the year.
But would that be a refund for someone that's acting up, and you ask them to leave?
No, there is not.
No.
All right.
They're gonna be fine.
But I will say to Chris's point where he mentioned our first three events of the year, so we've also limited those to a hundred and twenty players as well. And our, our first event coming up on Monday, Tuesday, um, that entry deadline technically is not until ten o'clock tomorrow morning. It filled up a week ago. We've got thirty people on a waiting list wanting to play in that event. Our next event coming up, that deadline is in three more weeks. It filled up four days ago.
Wow.
We've got twenty-five on a waiting list already. Um, you know, to speak about people wanting to play golf, our first junior event that we have, we put a hundred and fifty-six player field out there, it's full. We literally have sixty kids on a waiting list. So I mean, people are dying to get out there and play golf, and wanting to play golf. And, and it, it was asked a couple of times about, you know, could this be an annual event? And Chris said, you know, certainly hope so. I can say on behalf of the Georgia PGA, we certainly hope so. You know, we would love to continue to come back and develop a great relationship with the city. Um, and, you know, we, we wanna make it as good as it can be for your benefit. You know, we wanna show off West Pines and, and let people know that, you know, if you're over in this area and you're looking for a place to play, this is where you gotta go. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll do our part certainly to, to help with that.
Exciting.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Uh, just real quick, 'cause we're just about out of time. Um, how is the, the lessons going in the golf course, uh, since we've been open? Is it, you said that we're pretty packed out, it sounds like?
It's, it's been very busy, uh, rounds, just comparing this May to last May, rounds are up twenty percent. Uh, driving range use is up thirty-nine percent, and revenue's up thirteen percent. So we don't have the capacity that we normally have with the single-runder carts, but we're selling through our inventory at a much higher percentage.
That's great, thank you very much, Mr. Cartwright, and appreciate and welcome the PGA to Douglasville, thank you. If, uh, and Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight, uh, under Parks and Recreation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Our last report, um, if you don't mind, the Chair for Transportation, Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, um, Councilmember. Would you please take E and F?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Under Transportation, we have two items, update from staff for wayfinding and gateway signage findings, and that's with Ms. Watts.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Breonna Watts, Main Street Coordinator, sixty-seven zero-one Church Street. Um, as you know, the city of Douglasville has been working on a wayfinding and gateway, um, signage plan. And so really, I'm just gonna go over, um, the big bits of it. You should have it in your attachments. But this is just based on, um, your previous feedback and what Sky Design, the consultant, and the steering committee kinda came up with. So if you look at page one point one, which is to the, um, the bottom right-hand corner, it begins all of your options, there's six options. So it's a combination of different, um, stones and then the fabricated alumina, aluminum, which is the established, um, eighteen, an eighteen-seventy-five piece. So there's just, uh, differences with the light gray or, um, a darker red brick option, it kind of fluctuates. So there's six options there to look over. And then if you look to page twelve point oh, again, at the bottom right-hand corner, it just, um, it just maps out the family, the, the design family. So basically, which, it depends on which design that you all choose to go with. And then it kind of looks at the entire design family, what that will look like, from the gateway signage all the way down to directional signs and stop signs of that nature. So it basically just breaks it down, depending on, um, option one through six, whatever you all choose to go with, you think is best for the city, and then what all of your signs could look like.
Thank you, Ms. Watts, are there any questions or comments? I know this can get very, very lengthy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yeah. This is, this is a very picky design point, but I wanted to maybe bring this back to the designers.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit you to two minutes.
I'll keep, I'll, I'll keep the lecture short. On the gateway sign, on the gateway signs where you have the sign that says the wording Douglasville, and you've got a platform and a little knee wall on top of that, you've got stone on the knee wall, and you've got, looks like a brick or a smaller stone underneath that. And I would strongly suggest that they reverse that, just from a visual standpoint. You want small stone or small brick supported by a larger stone. So I think it looks a little peculiar to have this bigger stone on top. Um, you may wanna make that suggestion to them, is if they reverse those, I think those look a little, uh, a little, a little more pronounced, they look a little more, uh, comfortable to the eye.
Okay. Thoughtful note that?
See, don't you be quick?
Wow, Mayor Pro Tim, you did great. Is that it, Mayor Pro Tim? Okay, yes. Councilman Adams.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna, I'm concerned how we are going to come to consensus over one of these designs if we have problems with the size of the rock and brick in the pictures. Uh, I'm not sure. A- and, and you all as staff want us to have input as to which one, or h- how's that going to work, Ms. Watts?
I was gonna make a recommendation, but.
Madam Mayor, that's a comment that goes along with, um, Councilman Adams.
Yes, ma'am, I was gonna say, as the Chair of Transportation, um, there is a, a committee of committee members for transportation. If you all want to come together, let me see, Transportation, uh, yourself, Vice Chair is Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Adams, Councilmember Nicole Miller, and Councilman Watts. And, um, make a recommendation. And you can have two choices, and we can have a consensus at committee. Or you just make the choice and present it, and see if we like it or not.
Yeah, and we did have some.
You can do a subcommittee, you can be Peter, Johnson, James, just have three instead of the whole group.
Yes, ma'am, and we did have a meeting prior to, a couple of weeks ago, that was very in-depth. And what is the timeline for this, Ms. Watts?
So basically, it's just, um, whenever you're ready to, um, determine which option you'd like to go with, they're ready to put up the RFP or RFQ, uh, I forget which one it is, but, um, they're just waiting on us. So, um, as soon as like tomorrow, they're ready to, yeah, they're ready to go, we're ready to go.
So if you'll just, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the recommendation, did that answer your question? Okay, so, yes, Chairman, I'm sorry, am I missing? Oh, Ms. Hanson, I'm sorry, okay, I didn't see her.
No problem. Now, the only thing I was gonna add, um, for, in reference to your timeline, um, you are in the midst of your I-twenty Fairbun Road interchange project where one of your first major gateway signs is gonna go. So I would suggest that if your committee could make some recommendations by your next meeting, we can then prepare the RFP to move forward with your signage package. Because that project will be done late summer, early fall. So you will have a sign, uh, put in place in that location.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Watts, if you will, um, get with, get with me and with the other, um, committee members on a meeting, then we can go ahead and make that arrangement and make a decision, and present it to our Mayor and Council. Okay, thank you.
The next meeting, as in Monday?
Next round of meetings, June eleventh and fifteenth.
Okay, the eleventh and the fifteenth, okay, I was gonna say. So if you want to expedite it, um, and just do a subcommittee of the, it's, it's your decision, or you can do it yourself and present to the team and have them say yes or no?
Sure, okay, thank you.
Not trying to tell you how to do it, just.
Oh, no, I, I take that with pride, thank you, Madam Mayor. The second item is discussion regarding the speed hunt request by the Homeowner Association at, um, Charlton's Crossing Community, and that's with Mr. Thompson.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council, Marcus Thompson, sixty-seven zero-one Church Street. Um, as you guys may recall, we briefly discussed this item before you at the last round of council meetings. This evening, we have a representative from Charlton Crossing Homeowner Association to, to share more information regarding their request. Also, I would like to point out that there is a budget of seventy-five thousand for the current fiscal year and a hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one for traffic calming measures, including traffic studies, the installation and maintenance of the proposed systems as well. Um, staff will follow up within two weeks with all requested information from tonight's, um, discussion. It's great.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Grant, I am the community liaison for the Charlton Crossing subdivision. Um, we're coming to you for, um, traffic, traffic calming studies to be done within our subdivision. The main reason is for to slow down our speeders that are using our community as a bypass. We have two connected subdivisions that are driving through our subdivision speeding to get to their community, um, subdivision. So we're asking the Mayor and the City Council to approve our, our request for the speed humps within our subdivision. We are requesting four speed humps, two on Charleston Place, and two on Parkwood Avenue. The reason for it is to, for the request is to, is to prevent safety of the residents within our community. We have one individual that was also, was in the, a couple of months ago was going to get knocked down, he's outside.
He's there.
And also, a couple of our residents mailed box or knocked down due to speeders within our community. We want the city of Douglasville to pay for these speed humps, which is the, a cheaper method, which is the rubber, um, rub, the reflective rubber, um, speed humps, which that, and also prevent the signs also as well. We, uh, we are a small community, but our demographic has changed, or is changing, where it's more family-oriented now. So to prevent slowing down the speeders, to, for safety for our children and all the residents within our community.
Madam Mayor, do you have a comment?
I, I did, thank you so much, Madam Chair, thank you for coming in, Ms. Grant, and Mr. Thompson. I know you did ha- give us a fee of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, allocated, and, uh, but that was for studies and humps, and can you give me the status report on Hollis Street and the cost for that? I know we had, um, and if we were to, well, first, let me get to Hollis Street, what's going on with us?
I have to get with you guys next Monday to give you more information regarding Hollis Street and the price.
Okay, and this looks like another subcommittee, Madam Chair, um, if we're going to take on, um, the responsibility of paying for speed humps rather than maybe having some kind of criteria that we will do, have resources for studies? And maybe, um, Ms. Grant is, I know you're speaking of Saddle Brook and Grace Lake.
I was thinking of Charlton Crossing?
Yes, but there's two subdivisions you said that all share.
And also Parkwood, Parkwood Lake, um, Grace Lake.
Great, yes, ma'am, Grace Lake and Saddle Brook, that connect with Charlton Crossing.
Kensington.
In Kensington, yes, ma'am. So all of those are all connected subdivisions that, um, but, uh, do you have HOA fees?
But our fees is only three fifty.
Uh-huh.
Um, we don't have the funds to do, to pay for, for the study, traffic studies.
So if, if the city, maybe a shared, uh, cost, would you all be willing to share some cost? Because of understanding that it's, it's several, won't, won't just be your subdivision, but we have a plethora of subdivisions in the city of Douglasville and communities that will line up and want speed humps. And of course, we're concerned about the safety of everyone, um, in the community. So, um, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how it could be done and/or when they're platted, are speed humps there, or is there some other measure that we can take, like signage or something else o- other than the speed humps? That's a whole lot in that statement, but.
One point is, sometimes the, the traffic studies, sometimes it's not accurate for the simple fact that if a driver comes up and they see that, basically they're gonna slow down. So if you're doing a traffic study, they're not. So, if you're doing a traffic study, they're not going to, you know, it's not gonna give the accurate speed because they already seen it from ahead, and they're gonna slow down before they get to that.
Yes, ma'am. But we do have to validate, we're just, I mean, I understand you have a, a survey or a, um, petition, but we still have to validate by some kind of compilation or some kind of data that is warranted to have the speed hump. So, we would have to do a traffic study. It just can't be because, um, you all, we trust you, but we gotta verify, trust but verify. Yes, ma'am, okay.
HOA fees is three fifty. We don't have the budget, um, even, I understand that you want to split the cost, but it depends upon the actual physical cost of how much you would get that done.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Right, thank you, Ms. Grant, for, for coming to the meeting and presenting. I'd like to just have a comment from our City Manager. I know we had discussed this before, and if I'm not mistaken, we were going to come up with some criteria. Is that correct, Ms. Hampton?
Yes, ma'am, and with, um, the issue with, uh, COVID, some of our projects have been delayed because we put forth your priority project. So, I know, um, Mr. Thompson had been working on a sample ordinance. Uh, he can, uh, get back on that to present that to you. Um, so, you all may want to make a decision to either deal with this current request before or after, and we can talk about that in two weeks if you would like.
Yeah, most definitely. We do have to validate, um, a study. And I'm not sure if you've seen an, uh, upgrade in traffic since the, um, Highway ninety-two and the redirection of traffic. Is that what you've seen a high amount of since there's? Right, so there is a lot of, there are many several subdivisions and cut-throughs that others are seeing the same thing. So, I'm not sure what other methods we could use other than the speed. I, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from.
Also, I have a catch of M two coming down, so.
Right.
Madam Chair, I was gonna mention to you all that in the past, when you've had requests, if you want to move forward, um, to look at, uh, speed humps, you've done traffic studies over the last couple of years. On average, they're running about six thousand dollars.
They're six to seven thousand dollars.
So, um, in this current year's budget, we have a total of?
Um, seventy-five thousand dollars.
So, we have a total of seventy-five thousand dollars in this current year's budget, uh, that will expire at the end of June. So, at a minimum, if you wanted us to move forward with the study, we're able to financially support that. Um, Mr. Thompson, do you have off the top of your head roughly Warren Drive, what was the cost of those? We can have those for you on Monday as well. We can email them to you.
It was around twenty-five thousand dollars, and that included, um, two, um, speed humps ahead signs as well.
Right, just two. Just Warren Drive.
This is just Warren.
That's just Warren Drive, and there, there aren't any, there aren't many speed humps right there.
Right.
Warren Drive, Warren, just Warren Drive only.
Yes.
Right.
So, you, technically, to handle this request, you would come close to being able to do something if you wanted to move forward in this current fiscal year's budget. But for next fiscal year, you have?
We're at one hundred thousand dollars.
Now, and understand, in engineering, that's, that encompasses any type of study. That's when you have to do surveys, when you have to do appraisals. So, that hundred thousand is to carry us for a twelve-month period on a variety of things.
Right. Chairman Watts, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Watts.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Burdanley. Uh, one question is, um, the money that you talked about in the budget, the seventy-five and the next year a hundred, uh, does that pay just for studies? It doesn't pay for the humps themselves? Hey, okay.
Combination?
And I, I just was curious, uh, in this going back a little ways, how were the, uh, uh, speed humps that go through Arbor Station? How were, how was that done? Do we know? And the reason I ask that is I, and I've cited this before, I, I live in Saddle Brook, and I live at the bottom of a hill near the entrance. So, I, I've raised my family there over the past thirty-some, uh, some odd years where people speeding by my house. And we talked about speed humps as a subdivision, but at the time, when it was looked into, there was a cost that was steeper than we were willing to go. So, the HOA was expected at that time, and I don't know if the policy has changed over time or, or what, but I, I would like to see a clear-cut policy on handling these types, cause it can get expensive, especially when you start doing them, then every subdivision, I mean, I don't have a subdivision like Charleston does where it's one way in and one way out. Charleston does have a cut-through, Grace Lake, and I, and I know that people probably do speed through there, I'm, I'm sure. And Benton, uh, not Benton, um.
Kensington.
Well, Kensington's one way in and one way out. But the, the one, um.
Grace Lake.
Uh, off of Chapel Hill Road, right across from the golf course. Anyway, there's a couple subdivisions where, but, uh, anyway, we, we just gotta consider, you know, what we're willing to do as, as a city to ensure the safety of our citizens, but we also, you know, i- it's gonna get expensive, it sounds like.
Brook Mount, we were trying to think of.
If I can respond to you.
Yes.
Um, it, what Mr. Watts is saying is, is referring to is in Arbor Station, we have, we do have a cut-through street, Creekwood, uh, which does have speed humps. And I will say, from personal experience and traveling that street almost every day, it doesn't really work that well. People tend to speed up, slow down at the hump, and then they speed back up again. I had a couple of quick questions. Are there sidewalks along Charleston and Springwood?
They, they're.
We only have one sidewalk on the opposite side, on, on the, coming in, on the, on the south, but.
You have one, one sidewalk on one side, on one side, but not, on, on Charleston and on Parkwood is, okay. And how many stop signs are there along that route?
Um, about four.
Would, is, are there opportunities, are there intersections, do you think, and I guess this would be more for Mr. Thompson, uh, to answer. Are there opportunities to put additional stops, stop signs along there? And I wonder, would the community be sat, at least somewhat satisfied if we looked into the stop signs as opposed to, or?
Stop sign, when you comes in, when you come in through Charleston Place, between Charleston Place and Parkwood Avenue, there's a stop sign right here. We have to make that left. You can't go anywhere around because it's a dead end. So, you have to make a, a right on Parkwood Avenue. Then there's another one about another block down, and then the other one down at Logan Lane.
Here.
Between Logan Lane and Parkwood Avenue, where turn to go to Grace Lake Community.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like it may be worth looking into, you know, because you can also do mid-block stop signs sometimes, and they, they can be a little more effective, I think. Mr. Thompson, if you want to take a consideration of that as well.
Uh, definitely consider it.
Okay, Councilman Adams?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Two questions are, are, are an observation. Um, I believe that from what the lady, the, the young lady here has described, there's already a stop sign in any intersection, whether it be a four-way or a three-way. I believe there already is one. I'm very familiar, and they do have a problem with cut-through traffic. I'm very familiar with that area. My question is, what percentage, or do we have in any policy that we have in place, what percentage of the residents have to sign on? Because we have here, it says sixty-four percent of the residents on both streets are agreeing. That means that thirty-six percent either have, have not, have not chimed in on it or don't want it. So, my question is, i- is that enough to, for us to go forward and get involved in a neighborhood issue when you have more than one-third of the residents that have not agreed? I didn't know what the percentage was.
Um, should be sixty percent.
Sixty percent, okay, okay, that, that's a good number, okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Um, and I do agree with Mr. Miller, um, as a possibility of adding stop signs, but I, I don't know of any intersection that doesn't already have a stop sign, uh, and they're not that far apart. So, I do understand the concern. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I just would like to say one thing, uh, about wh- what we're talking about here as far as, uh, whether or not residents, all the residents wanna speed hump or not. And some of the negatives about speed humps I've heard, especially in residential areas, is they're noisy. So, the people that live closest to them, that, I mean, I've heard that. I don't have a speed hump in front of my house, but I've, I've heard that. So, anyway, uh, you know, Saddle Brook, their HOA, we, you know, a certain percentage has to agree to something like that, and I don't know what it is in Charleston. It sounds like they may have met that threshold with the sixty percent. Anyway, thank you, Madam.
Dr. Dan?
Yes, Councilman Davis.
To the young lady, you all have met, you had the signature. What do you all want?
Uh, four speed humps.
Speed, okay, alright.
You can do a traffic study. We can pay for the sign itself, which is a lot cheaper than what's being presented, um, across board. There's a company that we can go through to buy this speed humps indicator. We could pay for that. Um, the rubber material is cost-effective, that, um, and it's durable. So, it's, it's a lot, you know, cheaper than the asphalt, um, content. It's not, and it's not softer and not noisier than the asphalt.
Those are the speeds hump, those are the speed humps that you can t- take up. Those are the same ones that are in Warren Drive.
One drive, we got two on one drive, so that's good. Thank you.
Right.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, and I just want to point out that we are at, um, around six requests from different communities, speed hump requests. Just keep that in mind.
So, I, so, just with that, um, going back to the criteria, and I know with, with Hollis Street, it was my understanding that before those speed humps could even be, um, installed, that there have to be some more grading. Is that correct?
Yeah, Hollis Street, um, it was proposed to be resurfaced, so that was the holdup. And I would get with Greg Roberts on that, see what the status of that.
So, definitely would like to make sure that we prioritize and look at those that, you know, have requested prior to, and then put something in place, because just like what we've said, we have six already holding. After you start installing speed humps, that number will definitely increase. Not to say we do not want our residents to be safe, but we just want to make sure that we are following a really tight protocol, and we've just looked at every option.
And maybe like AE Comm has done for us and given us a list of our streets and, um, their, uh, criteria for how, you know, they need to be resurfaced. We can have a list for communities for safety, um, and for, uh, speed humps or some type of, something like that.
Right, and I, and I do really, uh, believe that once the Highway ninety-two project is complete, that you will see a decrease in so many cut-throughs, hopefully.
And another thing with our subdivision, we have curves. We have dump dip, and then we have up.
Encume.
So, there are blind spots around. So, if we can slow them down, for those speed humps to slow them down, that is a.
And that is definitely why we need the study. Right. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Dr. Burdanley, are you, um, okay, um, recommending that staff move forward with the traffic study?
Let me ask, did you have another comment?
I just was gonna ask real quick, I've, and I've seen these advertised, we get emails from different companies where they show, uh, speed limit signs that have, uh, something below it that, uh, that indicates when people are speeding, or s- actual speed, don't know what the cost of those are. But she pointed out that the study would slow people down just because they see, uh, so I was just wondering about those and the cost of those, if that's an alternative, uh, something to look at potentially.
Um, there's a company called Radar Designs, Signs, with, they're within, um, Atlanta here. Um, they're offering that speed traffic, the, the mechanism, along with the post for between twenty-eight, ninety-five and up. And it depends upon the size itself. And they'll do generate the, I think they will generate a data report on that.
So, Mr. Thompson, those neighborhoods that are waiting, are they six after Charleston subdivision or prior to?
Well, we have Hollis first, and then Braylon Manor, and then we have Charleston, so, yeah.
Okay, so, I would recommend, um, if, if it's okay with Mayor and Council, that we look at the subdivisions and see if they meet standards as well. If not, if, if they're meeting those standards with the petitions or whatever. And then if you can come back with some numbers in regards to the cost for Hollis Street, I think that's what, um, Madam Mayor had asked. And then on Monday, we may have to take this up at our next round of meetings, um, instead of voting on Monday. I think we do need to have the criteria in place before we move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it my understanding that we are required by ordinance to do a traffic study as a part of the, um, process that we're going through for the speed humps? Is that right, Mr. Thompson?
That's correct.
Yes, it's my understanding.
Okay, so we need, we need to have everything with the money that we're limited to in our budget, and with the statements that the young lady has made about their inability to be able to afford to pay anything on this, we need to make sure that we don't, we don't waste the money for the traffic study if it's, if we don't have all the other things lined up in an order. That one of them being, of course, the survey and the number of residents as a percentage and so forth. But I think that the Hollis Street situation was just waiting on being resurfaced, and we're ready to go with that, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be my suggestion. If, if we're going to go forward with anything, let's make sure that we have a consensus before we spend the money on that traffic study.
So, I think we're basically saying the same thing. Thank you.
Dr. Burdanley?
Yes, ma'am, hold on just a moment. Ms. Hampton?
The only thing I was gonna request, um, would it be okay if staff were to come back to you in two weeks, not only with the, um, information on the neighborhoods that have asked for the traffic study, but also, uh, the current policy, and then some of the research that Mr. Thompson has done with the other communities? Because one of the other directions that we would like to request is, in the interim, before there's a policy, if a community comes before us and they don't necessarily meet the threshold, um, do you all still want to move forward with the study? So, that's what I would like to get some clarification on, cause I know in this scenario, they don't necessarily meet the sixty percent.
Right, I, I agree. I think most definitely that we need to be consistent. And, um, if we're going to move forward with the study, then we need to move forward, we need to make sure that we are in compliance.
So, we'll come back with all that information in two weeks for you.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Grant, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I saw that a traffic study was done many mo- many years ago by one of our board members. Um, but I'm not sure how effective that study was back then. And I think you also have spoken with Antoine, um.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Otto McCoy.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past.
Yes, he used to be the chair, the, uh, president of.
So, I don't have any knowledge of the previous study. Do you, are you familiar with that, Mr. Thompson?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, alright, so, um, he, I'm sure you can do some research on that. So, in two weeks, we will bring this back up and have some answers for you, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
You as well. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, Madam Mayor, there are no other items under Transportation.
Ooh, thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on, uh, to comments, I apologize, comments from citizens and delegates. Do we have any, um, I know we didn't have anyone that called or signed in online, social media. Do we have anyone physically here, Ms. Chelsea? Okay, thank you so much. Any other business to come before council tonight? If not, I don't see any, then this meeting is adjourned.